Domesticated animals.
So the mayor is not going to be in attendance tonight, he's not feeling well. So that means that I guess I get to run the meeting. So with that being said, please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll go ahead and call the regular council meeting to order. Number three is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Number four, public forum. Anyone wish to address the council?
Can I just sit here? Is this one on?
I think we need you to sit there for camera purposes.
I just have a couple of quick comments. We had a funeral over the weekend on Saturday. There was no police escort and I understand we don't have police coverage in the city on the weekends because we're short officers that are qualified to do that. And also, all these people that went to the funeral came back from the cemetery complaining about the water that they had to wade to to get to the graves. Can we not take the dirt that we get from the graves, dig in the graves, and start spreading that around where all these water puddles are? That cemetery's out there like a flood. It's water everywhere. And if we start spreading the dirt now, maybe we could seed it in the spring and we can build that cemetery up. But there's water everywhere.
There's water everywhere all over the county right now.
I know, but it's really bad out there when you have to... And even during Memorial Weekend and stuff, you know, that's a wet weekend and it's usually way to get to the graves. That's all I have to say.
Ruth, is it mainly on the roads or...?
No, it's on the graves itself. And that's why I'm saying that, no, I wouldn't want the dirt spread on the grave. I mean on the roads and then reseed it. I want it spread on top of the graves and then reseed it. But they're just covered with water. And we've talked about this before and Margot said that it couldn't be fixed, but I think, and maybe Darren had some idea how to do it. But I'm thinking maybe if we could take that extra dirt and spread over the cemetery where it's low and reseed it in the spring, maybe we'd be ahead. We can't do it all in one year. I understand that. And we can't build probably the whole thing up in one time. But when mine gets low in my yard, I just spread dirt over the hole and the grass comes through. So it's something for you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
I'm sure you've seen me a few times. I believe back in December, Mr. Masters was supposed to have provided us with some kind of update. He had called me today saying he has some of the information. But other than that, I've tried to call him, haven't heard anything. Didn't know if you guys had heard anything from him or...
Have you gotten, been able to get with him?
I called him once, he literally just returned my... I called him back in December, first of January. He literally returned my call this morning. So...
I know.
Yeah, Margot?
I talked to James about it today and I think on Wednesday he's gonna take a punch list over there.
Okay.
Wednesday this week?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
He talked about that he's gonna take the list over and visit, so...
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of what he had mentioned, you know, about my son being there, you know, it was like, we had discussed this back in December and, you know, I still hadn't heard from him until today. So I just wanted to see if y'all had heard any updates other than that or...
Does Wednesday work with you guys on that?
Yeah, my son will be there Wednesday, yes. You know, but I mean, March is very quickly approaching. I know we've been completely under snow and ice for the last thirty days, but...
Maybe if you guys would reach out to Janet and make sure that she has your number so James could maybe call you and set up a time or something?
He's got my number and everything, so yes.
Okay, perfect.
Janet, do you know, I know James is at some meetings and not others. Is there a certain meeting that, like, is there a meeting that he's normally at?
He doesn't come in normally, but he wants to have some kind of report.
Okay. I don't know what anybody else thinks. So should we get an update from him at the next meet, from James too? I'd like to ask James to be here.
Probably wouldn't happen.
Yeah, 'cause I know he was gonna provide that kind of checklist. I know he talked about that on January eighth. But I do appreciate you keeping us updated.
Yes. I haven't been able to do anything because, like, so we've been under snow. And I'm sure you've seen me at every meeting. I mean, I'm trying to make sure that I'm definitely compliant, so, you know.
Or, I guess, Janet, could you just have James, even if, I don't know, he necessarily needs to be here, even if he would just provide an update?
I can talk before.
In the next meeting, you know what I mean? Like, you want just a written update in there?
Yeah, that would be...
Especially after he gets with you.
Yes.
You don't have a little list yet of things that you are not...
No, I haven't seen or heard, like I said, I tried to contact him. I think it was after the January eighth meeting and I don't know if he didn't get the message or what, but he finally called me, like I said, today. And that's the first I've heard from him since.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to, no, if you had heard any updates that I hadn't, you know, before. But no, if he's, I mean, Wednesday is great, you know, just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything I had missed.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council for a public forum?
Mine's really quick. Daryl asked me to take a minute during the public forum, which I thought would be at the end, so this is a little bit weird. But he wanted me to take a minute to thank the city of Marion and the population of Marion for all of the help in getting the restaurant up and running. We're gonna be opening for service this weekend.
Ooh, that's amazing.
Very excited for that. But it's been a long time coming and with all of the grants and everything, we just wanted to make sure that we expressed our gratitude for all of the help.
We are excited for you.
Yeah.
Big time.
That's awesome. Fantastic. Anyone else? All right, with that, we will move on to number five, approval of the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's a move.
And a second?
I second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I did have a couple of questions. I think it was on page, um, one, on the, it was insurance for the new bucket truck. So do we have that bucket truck, I assume, then?
No, not yet.
Yeah, it's set in the bucket.
Oh, it is? Okay, so that's why we had to insure it? Okay.
Yeah.
And then on page three, I'm assuming that clear bags at eleven thousand two hundred, that's for trash bags that everybody gets?
One roll of your...
One, gotcha.
Eleven thousand dollars of trash bags?
Yep. That's what I looked at. And they are a good trash bag, man. I don't look at that one. When you look at that many of them. So how many rolls is that?
I believe we got fifty thousand bags.
That's what I was gonna ask. Like, do you know how long that, when the last time we had to purchase?
Annually.
We have to buy them once a year, do we?
And then if you get more than one roll, then you pay for them, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought. And they're the same bags they'd had in the past, it hadn't changed?
Right.
What's the fee of, if you have to buy?
Thirteen.
Oh, thirteen, okay.
They're cheap. I mean...
Yeah, thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, for all those bags.
For that large of a bag.
Yeah.
And then I have one other question on page four. It was the appropriation to the library, that fifty one thousand seven hundred. Is that a one-time deal or is that twice a year?
No, that's quarterly.
Quarterly, gotcha.
When we give the other one, but the library split out.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, I think that's all I have.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Uh, number six, interim city administrator contract. With the mayor not being here tonight, he did give me, he was able to get in touch with Mr. McInarney and come up with a proposal. And so I think what, I mean, as far as number six, then we can kind of move on to number seven. What I'd like to do is go into an executive session for us to talk about that and we can come back out afterwards and go from there. So I would make a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, specifically the interim city administrator candidate to protect privacy interests of the individuals pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. Motion to include the city council. And I think we can get by with ten minutes. So we would, let's say, go in at, say, go in at four forty-five and we can come back at four fifty-five. That's a motion. Do you have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Okay, we'll call the regular city council meeting back to order. There was no action taken in the executive session. I would make a motion to approve Mark McInarney as the interim city administrator for the city of Marion to begin on February fifteenth, Thursday, February fifteenth. Let me make sure that date. Thursday, February fifteenth, at a rate of four hundred and eighty-eight dollars per day. And that is a fully inclusive rate, so no, that's it. There's nothing else in addition to that four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Yeah. I think I got it.
Yep.
Okay. Did you understand what I just said?
Got it.
Okay. That's a motion. Do you have a second?
I second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I think just a couple of things that I'd like to hit on here. So we said four hundred and eighty-eight dollars a day or two hundred and forty-four dollars for a half a day, which is anything less than five hours in a workday. We do have a proposed agreement here, so I guess maybe Janet, do we, should we make, to accept the proposed agreement? That, would it be acceptable in that motion? Do I need to amend the motion?
Yeah, why don't you amend it to include that?
Okay. I'm going to amend my motion to say approve Mark McInarney as the interim city administrator under the proposed agreement at a rate of four hundred and eighty-eight dollars a day to begin Thursday, February fifteenth. Is that okay with you?
Yep.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Does anybody else have anything? All right. So there'll be no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. All right, number eight, conditional use permit for Marion County. Margot?
The planning commission recommends that you approve a conditional use permit for the county for a health department. They base this on all their findings that they agreed upon and with the condition that they're required to get an easement for the drive-through and that it be recorded on the deed and that they look at the possible need for traffic control going through there. So you had a lot of information in your packet.
Going through where?
Um, they're gonna go through their garage and come out on the school...
Yeah, no, I got the traffic control, I guess, is more...
On the school lot. And so they wondered if, as people pulled on over on the Thorpe, if you need a stop sign there.
Coming out of the driveway. Coming out of the school lot.
Out of the school's driveway.
And that's not our deal, but they felt strongly enough, they wanted to put it in there to just say that they were concerned about that. I can go over all the findings if you want, but you had all that in your packet. So if you've got questions or...
Just to be clear...
Your choices are you can either approve it and deny it or send it back.
Their recommendation was to approve the conditional use permit, right?
Yes. And just, they want to make sure they get that easement and the county's aware of that and plan on doing that before they break ground on anything, so... We've got some county representatives here who have questions before them.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just to let you know on that easement we're talking about, the school isn't acting on it tonight. So that's already in process.
That was the only thing I was wondering, like, where it's written up here in the ordinance that we have in front of us, that county agrees to obtain an easement for the drive-through, but it doesn't say that it's with USD four oh eight. Do we need to have that in the ordinance or is that...?
That's why the condition is...
I knew it was a condition and it says that here, but it doesn't really say who the easement is.
I don't think it needs to have who it's with because that's the only property it could possibly be on to.
Okay.
And that's why I said it's already being worked on, it's already been agreed to. So it's just a matter of, once the school district passes it, it'll be A, I turn it file.
Okay.
Thank you, Darren.
Anybody have any questions? So do we need to, Margaret, do we need to approve the conditional use permit or approve, I mean, it's all the same thing, I guess, but we need to approve this ordinance with the number in it, right? Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number fifteen oh seven, the conditional use permit for the Marion County Health Department.
I make a motion to accept the ordinance number one oh, one five oh seven for the conditional use permit for the county, Marion County, for the health department.
And a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
I really like the look of the rendering out there. It looks like a really nice building, so I guess in the side comment.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Yeah, it'd be a nice improvement up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, Marion Merchants. Mrs. Enzie. Can you, does it matter? You are over here.
Oh, you want me to go here? Okay.
I can't hear sound coming from that part of the room. I heard you going, uh, line up.
Can you hear me here?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, good afternoon, I'm Tammy Enzie with the historic Elgin Hotel. And I'm here representing the Marion Merchants Association. If you're not familiar with what the Marion Merchants is, is we're just an ad hoc group of business owners, leaders, community members. We get together twice a month to share what's going on, to discuss concerns that we might have in regards to business in Marion, but mainly to collaborate. And so some of the things that we do is, like, put on Holly Jolly Christmas for the last four years. So we do some events like that to try to bring people outside of Marion to Marion. So try to grow our tourism. So the reason I'm here is because recently in some of the meetings we've had, there's been some concerns about whether there's any activity to backfill our previous economic development director, Randy Collett. That position has been vacant for over two years, as I'm sure you know. And there's growing concern also with Margot Yates, our community enrichment director, retiring in three months, what we're doing with that. So those are two individuals that the Marion business community has felt the most support from as far as city of Marion goes. And without people in those roles, we're just wondering who is supporting the businesses and business growth? Who's attracting new business to Marion? Who's trying to help businesses that are struggling so that we don't lose any more businesses as we have in two thousand twenty-three? So I don't know if, I don't know what the forum is here. I just wanted to voice that concern from our group. And I guess ask the question, is there any activity to backfill those roles?
I think, Janet, do you know, is the position listed? Do we have it up? No? Okay.
Neither, we don't, neither have we.
So I guess the answer is, on the activity, I'm not sure. Sounds like it's not posted, but as far, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, is priority. City administrator, getting a city administrator back in the seat was priority number one.
Sure.
We've obviously done that tonight. And in my, this is just my opinion, that's a, that's a very close second, getting an ECO DVO back in the chair, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not, I don't want to speak for anybody else up here, but as far as I'm concerned, it ranks very highly. So that's one of the very first things I would like to address once Mark gets here.
Great.
From my perspective, I, again, I don't want to be...
Yeah, absolutely. I think that should be one of our, you know, top importances is getting businesses in and supporting the businesses that we have. So I agree with you. I think that's, yeah, top of the line. Well, good.
I know Mike expressed concern about that and very much interest in his absence. I can't speak for him, but I just know he voiced that interest, but we never have got to the discussion about that.
Okay.
Necessarily, so...
Okay, yeah, so there is a question that, is there a reason that we need to wait for the city administrator to be in his role before we pursue recruiting for an economic development director?
I guess that was my question, honestly. And why, why has, you know, that position not been published for the last two years?
You're just stuccing my question.
I'm just wondering. I just didn't know if anybody...
There's been, I mean, I don't know, other than the fact that, I don't have any either.
I don't need to look strictly at you. I'm kind of just looking everywhere.
And I don't know what the answer is and I don't know that Janet probably does either. There's been, I can, I would, I mean, as we all know, there's just been a lot of turnover in a lot of different seats over the last two years. So I think unfortunately, it's probably just gotten lost in the shuffle. I guess I was, I kind of thought that the posting has always been up, but that's obviously not the case, so...
Yeah.
No, I don't think there's a reason to not.
I had had a couple of people that were interested in the role, but I've never been able to find a posting. And when I've asked the city, no one's been able to tell me that there is a posting, so... Maybe I could follow that up with, what are our plans to backfill Margot's role in the community enrichment?
I think that's been something that's been kind of, I believe, floating, correct?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure that we've had that, no, we have not had a discussion yet as to how this...
I don't, Brogan was working on a plan for that, but since he's gone, I don't know.
Right. So some of these are questions I think that are going to be better suited, once we get even an interim city administrator in here, somebody that's had experience, I would think we could bounce a lot of these ideas off of him and be able to ask him, you know, how have you seen this handled in communities that you've worked in the past? You know, how, how could we, you know, what do you best see? And if he's starting next week, we can...
We can ask him.
Be working on that pretty quick.
We'll just bombard him with...
Not that, I mean, we need to have that discussion too.
Yeah.
For sure.
But...
Well, I know, like, Brogan had discussed with us at our meetings about partnering together on Art in the Park, but then he said the city was taking it on. So we, I mean, we're happy to help with that, but my concern is Art in the Park is not very many months away. And with Margot leaving, like, are you working on that, Margot? Or are you just like, I don't think Margot's doing any work on it, so...
Yeah, I am. I'm...
But, you know, it's, obviously, from a human resources perspective, it's always advantageous to get someone in that's backfilling someone before they're gone.
Yeah.
So that we can do some knowledge sharing and not call Margot back from her retirement to ask her the million and one questions that we're all gonna have.
And I agree with that. And that we can...
Yeah.
Is there maybe a date that we should follow up? Or should we just knock on Mark's door when he starts on Thursday?
On Thursday? Just be there to greet him.
We, of course, will.
You guys meet, what, the second and...
Second and fourth Tuesdays.
Right?
Yeah.
How does that line up with when he's...
I don't have a calendar in front of me. I would guess that our next, I would guess we would have a meeting a week and a half after he...
Thirteen's the meeting, so...
Meeting number thirteen, yeah. Did you send him in to pick up an application or anything, Hannah? Or you said you had somebody interested?
No, I just, I had talked to a couple of people and, I mean, they've since moved on. This has been more than a year ago, so...
I didn't have somebody written through then, or...
No.
What about even meeting at the end? I mean, you'd want him to at least come in and, you know, get settled for a minute.
Right. Yeah, that's what I'm...
Yeah, it wouldn't be my intention to bombard him.
I'm thinking, maybe we can, you know, we have a meeting on the nineteenth and we could ask him if, if he was planning, if he could try and attend that meeting on the twenty-seventh that you guys have to do kind of an introduction with you guys and, you know, figure out where you guys are coming from and then, I don't know, what do you guys?
And then we can put it on the agenda for our next meeting to discuss it.
Maybe after that.
More in depth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that sound all right?
That sounds great. No, I appreciate it. Any activity towards that end would, I think, ease some, some worries.
When you're meeting, Tammy, Mark's not...
Federally.
The twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Yeah, the thirteen from the twenty-seventh, you have meetings. At noon?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, yeah.
Upstairs in the old house.
Up in the previous, yeah.
He's like, would you come to the one on the twenty-seventh, then?
Absolutely. He's welcome to come to every one if he'd like to.
All right. I will, I will give on him.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you for bringing up that.
All right. Number ten, KDOT Transportation Alternative Grant Discussion. I just wanted to put this one on there. I got a call from Darren the other day and thankfully he's here, so he can answer the really hard questions anybody has. But the, KDOT puts out a, or just came out last week with a grant opportunity. Transportation alternatives basically is, bike trails is a big one. You can maybe hit on some of the other things that would fall under it.
Well, is this not working yet? Okay, it's okay. This is also the same program that we funded the downtown with. So it encompasses more than just bike trails, but that's been their main focus for KDOT the last couple of rounds. This particular grant program, they do only every other year. So it was two years ago and now this year and it'll be two years before they do it again. So that's probably why I brought it up. It has a very short turnaround time. KDOT does this program a little bit different in the fact that by the first of March, so they gave us a whopping twenty-eight days, we have to turn in what's called a concept paper. And basically, it's, it's not a huge detailed application, but you turn in this concept paper, KDOT then goes through all the concept papers and decides who, what projects are eligible. They notify the, okay, now you can turn in an application, but only the ones that would be, actually be eligible. It's their way of kind of weeding out all the projects that are, don't fit the program up front. So within, by March first, though, if it's anything we thought about wanting to do, we have to turn in that concept paper. That's why I wanted to get it on the agenda as quick as we could, let you know all about we have to turn in that concept paper, that's why I wanted to get it on the agenda as quick as we could, let you know all about it.
So, so with that, we would have one more council meeting where we could approve the actual, um, concept prior to.
Right, and if, even if we didn't have the details ironed out, if, if you had an area or a idea that you could approve at that next meeting, that still gives me ten days to package it, to get it turned in.
So, when I heard about it, here was my thought, and I just wanted to bring this up, throw it out there, see what you guys thought. A bike path, this is an eighty-twenty grant, so the state pays eighty percent, the, we could pay, we could pay more than twenty percent, right? I mean, you can.
You can, but on this one, it doesn't gain you any extra points to request more.
So it's eighty-twenty grant, we're on the hook for twenty percent. I thought I'd had, um, something I've, I've heard people discuss, and that I think would be really cool, would be a bike path between the City of Marion and the County Lake. And if we could partner with the county on that, and actually, I see a county commissioner sitting right there. He's really glad he showed up now, but if we could partner with the county, I, I've heard in the past, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, that typically, if you get two entities working together on those grant applications, it actually makes them more.
Appealing.
Appealing to the, to the state. So it was something that I had, that kind of popped into my head when I heard about it, is an eighty-twenty, takes, you know, then, I, I don't know, if it's something that you guys are in favor of, and I don't know exactly how that'd have to work. We'd have to go to the county commission, somebody would have to go to the commission, um, and see if they would be on board with it, there's a lot of, a lot of things in there, but as a concept, it was something.
As a concept, too, it wouldn't necessarily have to have the county or the county buying off on it before we'd submit the concept paper, and then the details, if they say, okay, yes, go ahead and proceed with an application, at that point, we'd still have enough time to work if, to find out if there was some joint interest, so.
So we don't necessarily, I mean.
We wouldn't have to, it'd be good to bring it up and let them know that that might be what your intentions maybe are, but we wouldn't necessarily have to have the, a joint agreement in place before that concept paper was submitted.
Good.
Is that out of order?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I, I read over that grant too, and I was thinking about bike paths, and I also wondered if we could look at bicycle and scooter rentals that would be able to be used on that path, as well as, you know, in downtown.
Like some of the bike share stuff that you see, yeah, I've, I've thought that's some cool stuff to do.
Yeah, because we've done some research at the Elgin on that, we actually were about to pull the plug and do it in twenty-twenty, but then COVID hit, and every, all the prices changed, so it's just way out of our price range.
Yeah, and Darren, you're more familiar.
I don't know that KDOT would allow a third-party for-profit equipment piece.
Well, but I mean, even if the, what if the city, or I think what you're getting at is, what if the city would in, include it in the grant?
That's what I mean, I don't know that the grant could be used to purchase equipment that would be used for profit.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because you're renting, I see what you're saying.
Which you almost have to have a for-profit to take care of maintenance and all the other pieces and parts for those.
There'd be too much work done.
I, I, that, that would be the, the tricky part, I think, that a lot of those grant programs just can't be used for a for-profit situation.
Okay.
I, I mean, in my opinion, I think even just a bike trail, um, draws people in, there's people that search that out, and, and then you have, you know, kind of the Airbnbs that are popping up at the county, or at the, at the lake, I just, I think it's a.
That's what I've, I mean, I've.
A fabulous idea.
I've talked to people that live at the lake, and a lot of them have expressed interest to me, and they would like that, you know, the ability to have a, a different way back into town, um, I think it'd be kind of cool, that was just, I said.
There currently is a gravel road that leads out there, however, it's not the safest thing to, um, to bike on, which I do regularly. So, it might, it might just be a safety issue as well, by doing this, for those that do.
Yeah, that's for all the thrill, thrill seekers in life.
Yeah. My kids are concerned about that.
So, I don't know, I just kind of wanted, like you said, I wanted to throw it out there, see what your all's interest level was in it, um, if it's something that you guys go, no, I don't want any, you know, no, um, we won't, but if, if it is something that maybe we're interested in, maybe we, you know, try and figure out how we can hook up with the county commission and, um.
And like I said, from, from our standpoint, and helping get that put together for the first deadline, really, all I would need is either at this meeting or the next meeting, you guys to say, yeah, let's get a concept paper turned in on it, and we can get that part, you know, turned in.
Then from there, okay, so if you turn the concept paper in, and they come back and say, yes, this is.
They're supposed to notify everybody within thirty days of who, what concept papers earned the right to turn in an application.
So this isn't even the application?
No, no, this is not the application.
So we turn in the concept, and, and then come back and go, now, never mind, we want to back out, we're not.
No harm, no foul.
Okay, because I know sometimes.
What, what KDOT has told us when we've checked in on, on this program as well, so they're starting to do this with a couple others, is, you know, they get inundated with hundreds of applications on each one of these programs, and after they go through and look at them, about half of them don't even fit the eligibility criteria. So, so people don't go to forty hours' worth of work on a grant, they do, they're going to this concept paper thing where you're doing four to six hours' worth of, uh, time for them to say, okay, no, that doesn't fit the program, instead of, you know, a bunch of time to, in an actual application, for them to say, no, it doesn't fit this program. It's kind of a pre-application is about, is a better way to say it.
Why don't we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to move, go ahead and submit the concept paper to K, to the, for the KDOT grant for looking at a trail from the city out to the County Lake with EBH, um, submitting that paper for us.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Move the second?
Yes.
Any further discussions?
No.
The only thing I was going to say, and I don't, maybe, would, do we want to say over the next, I, I don't know, does anybody, I mean, if there's other ideas that we'd go out and talk in the community and see, like, hey, maybe it's not the city to the lake, maybe it's something else that's, that we, and then we come back in two weeks and actually do the final approval of what concept we want to go with? I, I don't know if anybody thinks so.
I mean, if you, I, I guess I have a question, if you submit this now, but then we are like, well, you know, let's, maybe not to the County Lake, then you'd have, it wouldn't work.
What I would do, I would not submit this until the first.
Okay.
I mean, we, we always wait until we're closer to the deadline, I wouldn't submit it like in the next two days.
Okay.
So, I would wait at least, basically, my plan would be, if Mark's going to be on board before the next meeting, which he would be, to catch him before the next meeting, and then also have a draft of that concept paper for you guys to review at your next meeting, now that I have that time. In the meantime, if you guys go out in the community and find that, hey, nope, hey, that we need to look in a totally different direction, and that's the heading you're getting from people, then that still gives me ten days to change it. So I think we're, this is probably the right.
Yes.
The right, the right way to move right now, and go ahead and get this part of it done, you have it in front of you.
Okay.
We can probably have that concept paper done yet this week, that way, it's, you know, when Mark comes on board next week, I can meet with him right away and give him an update on what's going on, and then get it right back on the agenda for the two weeks from now.
Okay. All right, well, that's the only question I had, anybody else have any questions? Uh, the motion has been moved and seconded. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you say the same sign, motion carries four zero. Number eleven, twenty-twenty-five budget engagement letter with Lloyd and Janet.
Yeah, um, last year, we did have a, um, city administrator, and I was fairly new, so we hired the Lloyd group to come in here and help us put together the twenty-twenty-four budget, and they did a really good job on being a good guidance for us, the cost of it was twenty-five hundred dollars, and in my opinion, I think it's a good idea to have them do that for the twenty-twenty-five, because here we're almost in the same situation as we were last year.
Do you know when we, do you remember when we approved that?
I, I should have looked before, after you said, but I think it was in April.
Okay. So we've got a little time on this.
Mm-hmm.
I was kind of wondering with Mark coming on next week, if we don't table this until after Mark gets on board.
I kind of knew about this, and I spoke with him individually, and he thought it was a good idea, but he said he'll work with whatever he's got to do.
He, he thought this was a good idea? To, okay.
To stick with and doing it. And he would, but he would work if, if something else needed done, to make adjustments. So.
I guess, I mean.
But the terms are the same as they were last year, I know there's a lot of wording on it, but it looked like it was all the same.
Yes, I do.
So.
Is it the same cost? What's the cost?
The cost is the same.
Is the cost is the same as well?
I mean, my preference would be to probably just table it until even two weeks from now, I don't think there's a big push from Scott to get this approved right now, I don't, I wouldn't like a big hurry on it, right?
Makes sense, I think.
Okay. We need a, we don't need a motion to table it, we'll just table it and get on that. Okay, I think, is everybody all right with that?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
We're going to table, um, the twenty-twenty-five budget engagement letter with Lloyd group. Number twelve, the laptops. I know that has the mayor's name on it, Janet, I may give some of this to you too, because other than the quotes that are sitting in front of me, and maybe that's why you have to, all that you know about it. I mean, we just have the, the quotes here from, from Lloyd on the different, different price levels for the.
The one he recommends was for the bolded.
Mm-hmm.
The old.
HP Pro Books?
Yeah.
Mike did tell me he does not have a preference one way or the other on this, he's, he is good with whatever. Did you guys, what are your all's thoughts on this?
I'm happy with that.
There, I mean, there was no preference for me, I know he said maybe just, um, he wanted a, can't do a tiny keyboard.
Right. I mean, I think we kind of talked about it last time, I don't know that anybody has a big problem with the size of a laptop versus the size of a tablet.
No, they're about the same.
For what we're using it for here.
Now, this one was the, the smaller size of fifteen point six, I, I believe.
Which is probably about what you've got there, isn't it, Tim?
Yeah.
That size?
Trying to find which one it was. Yeah, it says fifteen point six inch, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, uh, the fifteen point six is the standard, and I have no preference, I just think we should.
Okay.
Get going on it.
Somebody want to make a motion then? Make it, take a preference?
I'll move that we move forward with purchasing laptops, the ones recommended by Mr. Davies, which were the i-seven thirteenth generation HP Pro Books with, uh, the amount that was bolded there, with the unit price of, the quoted price of nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents each.
Have a second?
I second.
The move is seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those who oppose, same sign, motion carries four zero. Um. Counselors, you guys have anything? Tim, start down if you're in.
Nope. Let's cover everything.
Tim?
I do not either.
Amy? Um, I did have one thing here, um. I saw that we had gotten an email from, um, Kristen with Long Real Estate earlier this morning. Brian Bina forwarded those, I don't know if you've gotten them yet or not, Janet, he was.
I did, I did, right, lately.
Okay, so he, Brian was putting together those deed transfers right now, was one of the questions she had, so that's, that's moving forward. As far as a time to discuss the plans and designs any further, do you guys, I mean, I don't want to hold them up, I'd rather, I think we're trying to try and figure out something, we're probably going to have to make a special meeting out of it if we're all involved, I mean, if it's a meeting that, that they want to set, right, that they want all of us at.
Was there a timeline they needed that kind of decided by? I know you have that timeline.
The one that she wanted to move on and get rolling quickly was the deed.
Deed.
The deed, but they also want to, I think they want an approval from us on the floor plan.
Oh.
They wanted to meet with us and discuss that floor plan too, I think.
Well, would you guys know that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you have the images.
I just, I thought that, I mean, that was her initial, but I thought, I kind of got, I mean, her email says, um, chance to discuss these plans and designs further, so. I mean, I guess if we could just be discussing now, do you guys have any concerns over the plans? I mean, they, I think the, I think it was in the packet here too.
Yeah.
They are.
Do you guys have any comments or concerns on what was, what was presented there?
No, no concerns, it was pretty straightforward plans.
Yeah.
I think it's a pretty nice-looking house, I like the floor plan of it, I think, um, this one presented was on a slab, my, I mean, if, if I'm thinking through it in terms of, um, families, my preference would still be that it's on a basement, even if it's just an unfinished basement, to allow somebody the ability to expand really easily.
Mm-hmm.
I was kind of curious, you know, because at first she put out like a hundred and ninety to two hundred and four thousand, but we never really had a plan, and I don't think, unless I missed it, that it really stipulated like what the price point of this particular home is. I mean, I thought the layout stuff looked nice, the rooms looked pretty decent-sized, and the exterior of it looked good, but I don't know if that's the hundred and ninety or the two hundred and fifty. I'm assuming it's closer to two fifty than the one ninety.
Yeah, I think it's the two fifty.
Yeah.
But one concern I do have is there's no storm shelter whatsoever with this plan, and if there'd be something on site that would be.
There is actually, on this one, um, I was looking at this with, with Darren earlier, the master.
The master closet.
Closet, you can see if you look.
It's got a thickened wall around the master closet.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, we found that earlier.
I didn't know.
So it's got, the master closet is a storm shelter on this, if it's a slab home. If they go with a basement, that's, I think that's what her, that storm shelter would go away, and the mechanical room would go downstairs into the basement then.
Good.
If they're able to.
So what kind of a door is on that master closet then?
Darren?
What kind of a, what kind of a door is on that closet?
So, to be a true storm-ready door, you have to have a, it has to be a, a door system when it closes, and it has to open, I got to think about this, it has to open in, it has to open into the room, but when you close that door and you're on the inside, it'd also be a safe room too, because you, it has to have a deadbolt system with multiple latches that you can fasten, so that the air pressure doesn't blow that door in.
So it's not a hollow core?
No, it's not a. The, the question is, what I don't have an answer for you for, I don't know if the current, because it's been a little while since I've read those criteria, I don't know if it can be a solid wood door, I think it has to be a steel solid door.
Gotcha.
It's going to be a heck of a closet.
Yeah, it'd be a heck of a closet. But it'd just have a regular latch on the outside.
You go into the closet like.
Yeah, it, it probably would be, yeah, it'd probably be a pretty heavy door, right? I wonder, I wonder you're going to lose your fingers if you.
You'd have to sleep in the morning and wander into the closet.
Do they all have a double garage, or is there a, can you ask for like a single-car garage and make it less expensive?
I would guess that, based on the floor plan, that that two-car garage is kind of a.
It's the standard.
Because of the way that the master bedroom lines up on the backside of it.
Yeah, I see that.
So you, you think she said like two fifty on it?
That's.
That was what she said at the last meeting.
And then we've got forty thousand dollars, right, that people are going to be able to, so you're talking about a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar purchase price?
Right.
I mean, that's a lot of money, but for a brand-new home.
For today's day and age, you, I mean.
Right, that's just kind of where we're at.
Sadly.
I would be interested to see what their price point would be if they can get a basement under it, especially if they can get a basement with a, um, egress window that's already in it, so that you can put a.
Or even a partial basement, you know, even a, a partial basement, so you have that, at least.
Yeah, right. I didn't have any problem with the floor plan itself, really.
It's, it's nice.
Okay. Janet, can you?
Want me to ask her to adapt that one?
Yeah, but outside of that, I don't know that anybody had any problems, I think.
Mm-mm.
Well, kind of likely.
So you want to know what the cost is of this one that she presented, and then?
If they've got an estimated cost of that versus what a.
What it would be more.
Additional.
Basement home would be.
And then originally, I think we had said too, that, you know, we didn't necessarily want four cookie-cutter-type houses all exactly the same, I mean, you know, if they had, if this is the two hundred and forty, if they had a floor plan of a hundred and ninety or two hundred or something, just to see, I guess, what our options are.
Yeah, that's, and I'm thinking through that, I think that was going to be tougher for them to change their floor, because if you think about it in terms of, from their perspective, if they can go to somebody like their trust manufacturer, and say, you know.
Four of them, just like that, yeah.
Yep.
But we could at least.
Worth asking, worth asking the question, for sure. Okay. Um, that was the only thing I had. Department reports, Margot.
That's my first question.
Okay.
Play going on.
Steve?
It's not true, it's a, it's like a two-fold one. Very boring, yeah. We hate doing it.
You, you got to.
Thank you for going around and picking up the limbs, all you guys out doing that, I think that, the community really appreciates that.
Yeah.
That's a huge perk, to be able to just get them out by the curb.
There was a lot, too.
Yeah.[1753.48]
Yeah, so thank you.
I thought you were gonna say like mid-March.
Might have more by then.
Yeah. Janet, you got anything? Zach?
Yeah. Um, I've got two things. One, I found out about a grant opportunity for body cameras. It requires a fifty-fifty contribution. Um, even worst case scenario, if we go with like, not as, like, the Cadillac of body cameras, we're looking at our portion being like twenty-five hundred dollars, um, which obviously is, no, total. So still within my budget authority as a department head, but I just wanted to bring that to you. If that was a, like, no, we definitely don't want that, then I wouldn't pursue it. It's a pretty easy application, it's like forty questions, and that's all I've got to do.
How many, how many would you be looking at trying to get?
Uh, I would try to get six. That would get one for everybody plus a, a backup or one for a part timer.
You have.
And, and it's six that, they're about, the ones we're looking at are between six and eight hundred dollars at least.
Are these better quality than what we have now?
What we have now are from Amazon.
Oh, okay.
So yes.
Oh, my.
Would there be any additional computer and software, hardware, anything necessary to run these?
There are some that are that way. We're looking at ones specifically that we don't have an ongoing software to service on track.
Okay.
That we buy it and we're done. But yeah, the ones we have right now, they're like a hundred and fifty bucks on Amazon. So they're working okay, but we have the opportunity to pretty substantially upgrade for fairly minimal costs.
Right.
So. I just, I'm not looking for an approval or anything, just if you guys were, were adamantly against it, then I would drop it, but, um. So the only other thing I've got is, um, we've got Dustin Woodford that we hired on. He started last Thursday. He's on Academy Day work today, so don't have an Academy date, but he's, uh, excited to be on the team and.
How long, Academy's what, you said fourteen weeks?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, so is there a chance, hopefully it won't overlap with Brian's then, right?
It probably will.
It will.
Um, we don't know that yet because we haven't gotten a date, but, um, he's, Bryant is two weeks in now, so probably there will be some overlap.
Okay.
So the, well, for example, the, um, the three guys that the county hired, they're going March twenty-fifth. And so they've been on for two or three weeks now, so it's probably getting pretty close to that. So I'll probably start right about, I mean, they're probably, my guess is if we get them in the next class, it would be like three or four weeks that they're there together.
Where's that at again?
Outside of touch.
Okay, that's what you said.
How, where does that put us in terms of staffing now?
That would put us at four.
At four, including you?
Yeah.
What's, full's five?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome, sorry.
Yeah, welcome.
Thanks.
That's all I've got.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, Darren.
Oh, yeah, I, I, follow up, I need to clarify from a comment I made earlier. I said that the Board of Education was meeting tonight. I incorrectly stated they're meeting next, Monday night.
Oh, okay.
So that approval on that easement we talked about won't be till next Monday, but.
Okay.
It's still in process.
They've been talking about that, the school district's been in.
Yeah, yeah, the easement's been going back and forth between the attorney pieces to get it all ironed out. And so it's at the Board of Education for approval.
So the school was on board with doing it?
Oh, yes.
Graining it?
As long as it wasn't a full-time in and out. The only time after access, or the, it's, it's just an egress, it's just going on to and out. The only time it's gonna be used is if the double doors on that garage are up and they're having to push a high volume of people.
Oh, so there's actually a garage door on that port?
There's a double garage door, one on both ends of that garage. It's not just a carport, it's a double car garage.
We're literally controlling access back through there.
Right, so the, the average normal person that goes to the county health department will not be able to pull through that and pull that on to the school district. Only when those garage doors are open and being used for mass vaccinations or testing or something along those lines. Not me, Martin.
Who puts us at number fourteen, motion to adjourn?
I have a comment to make. While this is before, then we get in and after this meeting, that we can make a public statement. I just was going to ask, how many days does a new, uh, president, student administrator have to be working a week?
Uh, somewhere between three and four days a week.
Okay, so we have to set down.
Well, it, it just kind of depends on his schedule. He, he's required to give us, um, some notification on it, but somewhere between three and four days a week.
All right, and then I'd also like to make a remark about the body cams, because they go through the necessary to spend the taxpayer's dollars for it. I showed them just beautiful on the body cams that they raised in my house. I see nothing wrong with them.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
It's been, yep, and Amy's the second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.